Good evening, I'm Allen Joins, Mayor of Winston-Salem. It's my pleasure to call to order this April 18th meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council, and I'd like to ask the city clerk to call the roll place.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Monday.
Present.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Protim Adams.
Oh, here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Thank you very much, we're all present and accounted for. Would you please join the city council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you very much, and would you join the city council and me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, I'd like to recognize our sergeant in arms tonight is Lieutenant R.T. Phillips, thanks, first time Lieutenant Phillips has been with us, we're glad to have you. You must have drawn the, it's short straw tonight, we're glad to have you Lieutenant. Tonight's agenda, the city council is comprised of two parts, the consent agenda and the general agenda, and it's always the practice of this council to take the consent agenda as the first order of business. Items on this agenda have been unanimously recommended by a committee of the city council or are being submitted in accordance with established city procedure. There'll be no discussion of the items on this agenda unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered individually. Items not removed from the consent agenda will be enacted with one motion. The meeting is being televised live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. and again Wednesday at 9:00 p.m. Of course, citizens can always get copies of our agenda, as well as videos of previous meetings by going online at the city's website and select the watch meetings online option. I know councilmember Cipio has four items, you said, C2, C14, C17, and C18. Are there others, councilmembers?
I move for approval of the balance of the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion in second, and the item comes up, if you would please vote on that motion to approve the consent agenda. Thank you, that is unanimous, thank you Mayor Protim. Go to the items being pulled, item C2, if the city clerk would read that item, please.
Item C2, resolution approving the extension of the recovery grants program for small businesses and nonprofits, recommended by Finance Committee.
Thank you. Mr. Tesh is here, you want to question, Councilmember Cipio?
Yes, I'd just like for the public to know exactly what's happening with this extension and how small businesses and nonprofits can take advantage of it.
Mr. Tesh, if you could give us a brief summary of the action, please.
Yes, sir, so, good evening Mayor Joins, Mayor Protim Adams, and members of the city council. Councilmember Cipio, this is a program that the city council originally approved in November, roughly $200,000 has been administered to date, there's another 250,000, 300,000 worth of applications that are currently being reviewed, but they didn't provide adequate documentation. One of the things that we heard back, both from the United Way, who is our administrator, and from several of the applicants themselves, was that there was that lag or gap period between when the city council approved the original program and when the implementation or application date was, which caused issues for some of them not to be able to apply. So, we have recommended here, staff has, with your approval, we would reopen that process for small businesses and small nonprofits, remove that lag of about a month and a half or two, so that essentially, we would open this, hopefully next week, and if you were in arrears as of next week, you would be able to apply for help with rent, mortgage, or utilities assistance for those who were originally eligible. None of the other eligibility criteria are changing, it is simply that date for eligibility.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If I have a motion, Councilmember Cipio?
Yes, I move for approval of C2.
In second. Motion in second, any further discussion? If not, you'd please vote for this item when it comes up on your screens. And that is unanimous, thank you. Item C14.
Item C14, resolution authorizing the restructuring, a demolition loan to the Housing Authority of Winston-Salem for the former Brown Elementary School site, recommended by Finance Committee.
Ms. Newman, welcome. Short presentation, councilmember.
Yes, Ms. Newman, I just would like for the public to really understand how difficult it is sometimes to take advantage of a blessing, which was our Choice Neighborhood grant that we received, and all of the complications, and why it hasn't happened as quickly as some believe. So, I've called for those other two items to be, other three items, to just be discussed and give them an overview of what's going on.
Yes, ma'am. So, good evening Mayor Joins, Mayor Protim Adams, members of the council, I'm Marla Newman, Community Development Director. So, item C14 is the first item that has been pulled relating to Choice Neighborhoods, in this regards the restructuring of the demolition loan that we made to the Housing Authority of Winston-Salem. So, a few years ago, the Housing Authority had ownership of the building, before they could move to develop some housing at that location, the part of the structure burned, and they came to the city, asked for a loan to help cover the demolition cost. Since that time, we have been, as you said, councilmember Cipio, blessed with the Choice Neighborhoods grant, that now will be Phase 1, or the first location where housing will be constructed. As part of the overall financing packages, which consist of multiple layers of financing, including our existing debt, it has been necessary to restructure where our payments are in the lineup of the debt. The Housing Authority will continue to make payments on this particular loan, but as we restructure and get all of the financing in order, it's just necessary to close out the original loan, create a new loan, so that the Housing Authority can continue to pay us, and we will be in a subordinate loan position.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval.
Thank you.
Of C14.
Your second?
Second.
Thank you, any further discussion? Now, please vote when this item comes up. And that is unanimous, thank you. Item C17.
Item C17, resolution authorizing permanent financing for an 81-unit family rental development in Phase 1 of the Choice Neighborhoods Initiative, recommended by Finance Committee.
Ms. Newman?
Yes, sir. So, the Brown Elementary School site, which we discussed a moment ago, is what is considered Phase 1 of the Choice Neighborhoods Redevelopment Initiative. We had previously arranged financing for this particular site, all financing was in place. However, when it went to HUD for approval of the different layers of financing, HUD requested that less Choice Neighborhood funds be used, and asked if there were additional funds that could be contributed by another source. The city has stepped up and has offered to invest $500,000 in home funds to reduce the amount of Choice Funds that are going into this very first phase. HUD is interested in making sure that the Choice Funds are spread throughout all five phases of the development, and not so much front-loaded with Phase 1 and Phase 2. And so, this was an accommodation that we made to the project on behalf of HUD at their request.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Newman? Councilmember?
Yes, I move for approval of C17.
Thank you, sir, second?
Second.
Thank you, motion in second, any further discussion? Now, please vote when this item comes before you. And that's unanimous, thank you. And then item C18.
Item C18, resolution authorizing to city funds for Phase 2 of the Choice Neighborhoods Initiative, recommended by Finance Committee.
Ms. Newman?
Yes, sir. So, I just spoke about Phase 1, and so now we're making preparations to move into Phase 2 of the Choice Neighborhoods development. We were fortunate enough that the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency did a five-year set aside of tax credits for Choice, so, set aside for each year of the development. As part of that set aside, however, there is still the necessity to submit an application to NCHFA. The application is due in May. One of the requirements of that application is that all sources of funding be identified. We found that in order to meet that requirement, approximately $8.4 million was needed to close the gap on the financing, and so the city has recommended a variety of sources to assist the project with closing that gap, so that the application can be submitted on time to NCHFA next month. That particular gap consists of home funds, again, another $500,000, just like we did in Phase 1, ARPA funding in the amount of $4,495,344, economic, city economic development funding, $3.4 million, general obligation bonds, housing bonds, in the amount of $288,890, and then CDBG funds, $375,000. The CDBG and GO bonds were originally approved by council as part of our application for the Choice Neighborhoods grant. At that time, we made a commitment of $3 million in CDBG funds and $3 million in general obligation funds. So, the amounts that you see here just confirm that initial commitment that we made with the application, and this is what will go towards the second phase of the development. And that second phase will be at the Cleveland Avenue Home Site, and it will be developed along Cleveland Avenue itself.
Thank you. Other questions, Ms. Newman?
So, Ms. Newman, just to reiterate, for the Phase 2, the city is actually investing $9 million into that project.
Correct.
So, people need to know, we do have to input dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
Even though we got a $30 million grant for the whole project.
That is correct.
Yeah, thank you very much, and with that, I move for approval of C18.
Sir, second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Clark.
Ms. Newman, approximately, when will Phase 2 begin?
That will begin, relocation will begin later this fall, and actual construction will begin late in 2023.
2020?
Three.
Three, okay, so we're a year off or so, a year and a half?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, if there are no other questions, please vote on this item when it comes on your screen. And that is unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Newman. The council will now go to the general agenda, which is comprised of the following, there's an item related to the funding for pre-development services for two sites, there are two items related to boards and commissions, the public comment period, and a closed session. The public comment period is a time that we set aside once per month for citizens to voice their opinions on matters that are germane to city government. When the comment period is called, each speaker will be given three minutes, and the comment period will be limited to 30 minutes. Ms. Keenan, would we have the first item, please?
Item G1, resolution authorizing pre-development services for two sites, recommended by Finance Committee, with three in favor and one opposed.
Thank you. Again, this is Ms. Newman's item, if you could give us a brief indication what this item deals with, Ms. Newman?
Yes, sir. We have talked about the need for the city to be proactive and take the lead in sponsoring housing development in Winston-Salem. One of the things that is sorely needed is technical assistance to support staff's efforts to move forward with creating affordable units in the city. I will stress, however, that I know that we are looking at providing a mixed income strategy, so that it was not just that we're providing affordable units, but we're sponsoring and supporting developments overall that are a blend or mix of incomes, so that we're not just concentrating low-income units in any part of our community. As part of the technical assistance, we've reached out to the University of North Carolina School of Government, they have something that's called the Development Finance Initiative, which provides technical assistance to local governments throughout the state of North Carolina, to do just exactly what we're proposing to do, give us guidance and support, and in this particular instance, technical assistance that takes the form of pre-development services, so that as we identify property that the city owns that we would like to have developed, they can take us through all of the steps up to and including issuing a request for proposals for potential developers. So, it provides a level of expertise that no one else in this state provides, and it certainly supports us in our commitment to move along the path to creating the 750 units of housing that we committed to shortly, a little bit over a month ago, that we wanted to do. So, this particular proposal contemplated two initial sites, one that was approximately 34 acres, and another that was about 5.3 acres. So, the proposal is based on those two sites. One we own, the 5.3 acres, the other we do not yet own. So, should, for whatever reason, we not actually acquire the 34-acre site, we will work with the school of government and look at additional sites that could take the place of that. So, as part of this, we would look at a contract not to exceed the $181,000 that is listed here in the CARFEN Resolution, and then look at how we would tailor the actual services separate and apart from the 5.3 acres that we currently own. So, we're looking at a backup plan or strategy, should we not be able to acquire the 34 acres. There are some other city-owned sites, and we also have our eyes set on acquiring other properties that we're continuing to research. But at least this gets us in a position to get the technical assistance that we need, so that we can pretty much hit the ground running and develop the housing that we all want to see.
Good, thank you, Ms. Newman. Any questions, Ms. Newman? Councilmember Monday?
Thank you, Ms. Newman, just a question, do we know if any other municipalities in the state have used these services?
Yes, they have, and I apologize, I don't have those in front of me today, but I do have, well, let's see, I'm not thinking that this particular proposal has the, some of the locations, but there are some in Durham, Chapel Hill, and a few other communities around the state, and I'll be happy to get that for you.
I don't need to see it, I just wondered if we had someone to check with who had personal experience.
Absolutely.
Sounds like you did, thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Clark?
Yeah, I voted against this at Finance Committee, and I will be voting against it again tonight. As Ms. Newman just mentioned, one of the two properties we don't even own, I'm not sure why we're signing a contract on something if we don't own it yet, and she did make a valid comment that we could have them look at something else. Well, I would suggest we do a contract when we have something else for them to look at. As far as the land on Peters Creek, I believe that land has been in front of this council before, it is a, going to be a zoning, could be a big zoning issue, I know the last time, if it's a piece of land I'm remembering, we did not approve the rezoning of it. So, I just think to pay this kind of money is obscene to market, particularly the property on Peters Creek that is well-known, it would not cost a fraction of that to notify folks in the community that do residential development work to see who might have an interest in it. I think the challenge there is going to be political, not who can build it or what they can build, but we'll see. Anyway, I will be voting no, thank you.
Mayor Protim Adams, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Did you want a motion?
I'd love to get a motion.
Move for approval.
Sir, second?
Second.
Motion in second, go ahead.
Thank you. Again, what we're seeing across the country, all of us know the housing costs are just rising, and there is no end in sight. And cities are also compromised or challenged with dealing with federal monies and state monies coming to cities, towns, villages in this country. As many of you know, we are short-staffed, just like everybody else, and to try to continue the vision of providing housing in this city, our community development and housing departments need help. We are not the only ones, as Ms. Newman said, numerous cities are relying on development, financial initiatives and offices to help them across the country. We are just lucky enough in North Carolina that we have one of the best, if not the best. And we have used the school of government for numerous years, the city, and I think this gives us a great opportunity to get a third party or some other eyes on, not just what we just came out of our housing summit, but on some of the information and comments we received from citizens and others as to where we need to be with the housing. We don't know everything, we're not perfect, and to me, I see this as a win-win for the city, I see it as a win-win for the community, that we can at least delegate the needed services and things we need to do, whether we're preparing for a 34-acre site, or whether we're preparing for all these parcels and everything else that we have here in the city. So, I will be supporting this general agenda item, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Tim. Councilmember Cipio, then Councilmember McIntosh.
Ms. Newman, I think this is a different step for us as a city, and oftentimes, you need to change your step to get to where you want to go. So, I think using the school of government is an excellent resource, however, I'm just curious if we all understand the key actions and steps that's going to be paid for out of this money, and the timetable that we're, you're planning to implement it under. So, I know it says pre-development, if you could give us those key major steps to let us know exactly what we will be getting for our money?
I'll be happy to. I'll start with, and there should be attached to the item in your packet, the actual outline of the proposal to provide the pre-development services. Those services consist of 14 different steps, they include a community scan.
Sandy, could you pull that item up on the screen for us if possible?
[coughs] Thank you, Sandy. Excuse me, if I interrupt, can you, Ms. Newman?
That's quite all right. As they say, a picture's worth a thousand words.
Yes.
Yes.
So, you see here on the screen, of course, conduct the community scan, which gets you some market-relevant demographic and socioeconomic data, analyze that data for parcel analysis to understand current market conditions, conduct a market analysis, certainly establish guiding public interest for each project and collaboration with the city, so understanding what it is that we want on each site, perform some site constraint analysis, so what works best in light of topography, zoning, and the like, start with, next, a financial feasibility analysis, preparing a financial model, what kind of funding is necessary, is available that can help move this along, evaluate the different financing options and structuring the public participation. So, structuring the public participation is much like you heard us talk about with Choice Neighborhoods, what kind of monies might the city have available and be able to contribute to a development, certainly support staff in our community engagement, efforts to solicit input from the community, prepare or propose feasible private development programs, prepare a solicitation, or as I mentioned a moment ago, a request for proposals for development partners to assist us with developing, actively market and discuss the solicitation with qualified development partners, support the city in making the selection of the potential development partner, support us in negotiating deal points, and support us through the close of financing for the project. So, basically getting us to the point where the developer is ready to turn dirt. All of these services are scheduled to take place over a 16-month timeframe from the moment of initiation.
Thank you. Any other questions, Ms. Newman? Councilmember McIntosh, excuse me.
I would agree with Councilmember Clark that $181,300 is a lot of money, but in the world of development, expertise is expensive, and to get good expertise costs real money. And I think, as I said the other night, we, those of us who've had experience with the school of government, I think, have placed a lot of faith in their expertise and really think they're, you know, highly competent in what they do. I would suggest, I would make the suggestion that if the 35 acres is not on the table for us to look at, I'd like to see us request school of government's expertise in identifying sites in all eight wards to share 200 units per ward of affordable housing. Let's start working on locations all around the city, and possibly use their expertise in helping us along in that.
Thank you, I'll be sure to take that back to them.
Councilmember Monday?
I want to clarify, or see if my memory is correct, this cost would otherwise have to be paid to a broker or some other commercial developer, not developer, but a commercial entity that would do a number of the things that are listed here, is that what I remember?
That's one strategy, and sometimes developers themselves take on a lot of this work, but they also charge you for it as well, and their rates are generally higher.
I was going to say, this actually would represent a cost savings versus the traditional way.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Developer might get 8% to 10%, maybe higher in that deal. Councilmember Larson?
Yes, the five-acre parcel is in the South Ward on Sides Road. This council agreed to buy it with a condition that it would be used for single-family owner-occupied properties, didn't say what the architecture would look like, everything from cottage courts to townhouses or whatever, but the criteria that was laid on that spot was that it would be owner-occupied, not more rental. This was a primary concern of the residents over in Kings Tree that objected so vigorously last time any proposals were made on Sides Road for development. I think the thing about this proposal which attracts me and makes it viable in my mind is that we talk a lot about making housing projects, we dream about what we envision for affordable housing, or workforce housing, or mixed-use housing, but we don't blend in who the developer's going to actually be, who's going to build this. I mean, we have a vision of what we want, but finding contractors to do it is an entirely different project, or developers to do it. So, if this project works as well as we hope for it to work, that part of getting, lining up some actual expertise on how to build these things and get them in the landscape is going to be useful, and I think that's going to probably be more than our staff can handle anyway right now. So, that's why I see it positive, and although I know the Sides Road has been contentious, I think that with proper management by these people, we can probably get through it all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Larson. Councilmember Cipio?
I'm in favor of this, because the 35-acre tract is a facel, it hasn't been sold yet, but it is in the East Ward, it is in a qualified census tract, it is a piece of property that's very large, it can accommodate many uses. It is in an area that's been neglected. Developers just don't come to the East Ward and put in houses, they haven't done it in about 50 years. We don't have retail on the East Side, because people don't come to the East Side that has been victimized through redlining for many years. The attitude is that the East Side is not a good place. What an awful, awful perception it has. The thing I see with this is that it has the opportunity to bring value to the East Side, to look at the value that's there, to look at the wonderful people who live there. Thank you. I'm in favor of this. 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 Side, to look at the value that's there, to look at the wonderful people who live there, to undo the neglect of investment that has existed since 1937. So I'm in favor of this because it could make a change, and it looks like we're really intentional about changing all of the neglect that has happened in our qualified census tracts.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Councilmembers. We do have a motion in front of us to approve this item. If you would vote when this item comes before you. Thank you. That is, motion's approved, seven in favor, one opposed. Councilwoman Clark voting in the negative. Now we go to item G2.
Item G2, mayor joins recommendations for appointment to the MWBE Advisory Committee. Eric Hairston, Odey Yambos Sanchez, terms expiring January 2024.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? If not, please vote for this item when it comes before you. Thank you. That is unanimous. May we have item G3, please?
Item G3, mayor joins recommendation for appointment to the Citizens Budget Advisory Council. Freddie R. Salisbury, term expiring July 2023.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second. Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, please vote for this item when it comes before you. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmembers. Item G4.
Item G4, public comment period.
Again, as I said, this is a time we invite citizens to speak to the city council on matters that are germane to city government. We ask you to give your name or address for the record, as well as limited your comments to three minutes. The first person signed up is Celine Johnson.
Greetings, city leaders. My name is Celine Johnson at 27103. I am here representing Haight-AutofWinston to continue to advocate for the alternative mental health response model and not the co-responder model. I am a professional in the field of mental health and developmental disabilities and an immediate family member of someone who suffers from mental illness and severe substance use disorder. When RTI was working on this project, they stated they would engage focus groups. However, the only focus group they engaged was police officers. So I want to thank the Public Safety Committee, City Council, and the city for its recent efforts to bring more attention to this critical community need by engaging residents in a public input session last week and through the online survey being circulated via social media. During the public input session, the majority of residents who spoke were in favor of the alternative response model. It's also important to note that the majority of speakers are not random community members, they are actually experts on this topic. Those who were clearly in support of the alternative response model included professionals who work in the fields of mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance use disorder, or those who were directly impacted by those conditions. Some of the speakers included a psychiatric nurse, an autistic self-advocate, a licensed psychologist, a parent of a child who died by suicide, a board-certified behavior analyst, a person diagnosed with bipolar disorder, a teacher, and a member of clergy. I hope the city will be mindful to consider their sources of public input, giving more weight to voices of professionals and those directly impacted by mental illness, substance use disorder, and developmental disabilities. I want to remind the city that in May of 2021, more than 100 local professionals who work in these fields provided a letter to the Winston-Salem City Council recommending the alternative mental health response model and not the co-responder model. I've seen some conversation on the city's social media pages wherein residents have stoked a fear mentality when it comes to supporting people with mental illness. They have framed people with mental illness as violent criminals. Please hear this, people with mental illness are not categorically violent. They are much more likely to be the victims of crime than the perpetrators, and they are 16 times more likely than people without mental illness to die at the hands of police officers. Further, the alternative response model does not send mental health workers alone to respond to calls where there's criminal or violent activity. I ask that those making decisions about which model our city chooses, please weigh the voices of our community experts more than the voices of an uninformed public. There are times when law enforcement is the right professional, and there are times when they are the default professional, simply because that's how our existing systems work. We must choose the alternative response model for our city so that we can provide more comprehensive and appropriate emergency responses, resulting in better and safer outcomes for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Miranda Jones.
Greetings, mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and esteemed members of city council. I'm here with Haight-AutofWinston to implore you to implement the alternative response model. After the last meeting where you were gathering information from the public, it seemed that a decision had already been made. It appeared that the professors were brought in to justify the implementation of the co-responder model. I was unclear as to how this happened, and then I asked myself, if I were a politician in a society obsessed with policing, particularly policing black people, how might I handle this? If you're worried that your vote for an alternative response model will somehow make you appear anti-law enforcement in the eyes of voters, let me reassure you that nothing could be further from the truth. Your inflated $78 million budget proves that you support law enforcement. While many of you were on your campaign trail, you took donations from law enforcement agencies. There is no evidence to support that you are anti-law enforcement, quite the contrary, and sometimes that worries us. Additionally, while the ad nauseam Republican response is that when crime goes up, you increase the police budget, this goes back to the 80s, if not beyond. I sometimes think they're tough on crime and like the police, everyone that isn't in a white body. The problem is, it simply doesn't work. In our own city, crime keeps going up, yet you all still support law enforcement, so your voters have nothing to worry about. The money for law enforcement remains intact, even though our city cannot recruit enough law enforcement officers. So you said, let's reimagine. Now reimagine is often a code word for regurgitating the same old thing to an uninformed constituent base. It is a morpheus and political jargon. Let's not do that. It is insulting, to say the least, and not progressive at all for a largely Democratic city council. So we challenge you to something higher, something better. Councilmember Monday, your page, platforms, positions, and plan states the funding the police is not the answer and not an option I would support. I do, however, think we need to define what public safety should accomplish and should revise spending based on new guidelines to shift more to focusing, excuse me, to addressing the root causes of crime and working to prevent crimes and the conditions that lead to criminal activity. Let's go with that. Mental health issues and crisis as root causes. We ask that we, along with the community, have input with the plan that Ms. Tony drafts and submits to the council prior to a vote. Let's work together to reimagine this alternative of mental health response model. After all, Chief Thompson did say, we're expected to be everything, teachers, babysitters, healthcare workers, mental health providers, oh, and by the way, handling crime as well. I'd be happy to real, reallocate funding into those programs or into those peoples or organizations that can provide those things. Arrested Development said, talk up, talk up, but don't talk up all night. The urgency is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Bink Jones.
Good evening, city leaders. My name is Bink Jones, and I live in the 27106. I stand here before you tonight as a citizen and a member of Haight-AutofWinston, and I have a feeling you know what I'm about to talk about. I offer my thanks for holding the public input session and raising up the voice of the people per Councilman Taylor's commitment at the end of a city council meeting a few months ago. We were happy to hear so many in support of a true alternative response model. In fact, the majority of attendees felt that way. It is clear that the increase in safety for all parties impacted by this shift, as well as the amount of tax dollars saved, is something valued by our community. However, as my comrade Sister Miranda Jones said, we are anxious that a decision was made prior to that meeting, based on the Fox News story that aired that morning titled "New Plan in Place," and the way that Doctors Nation and Monell spoke to the gathering about the function of the co-responder model without any explanation of true alternative response. We urge you to not have held that meeting in vain, and that you will follow the voice of the people and our very own chief of police when the time comes to make a final decision. As Councilwoman Cipio said tonight, if you want to get somewhere, you have to change your step, and this is the 21st century's new walk. This is what the chief of police asked for herself, this is what the people have asked for, and it's time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kevin Cranis.
Good evening, mayor. My name is Kevin Cranis, I'm a council. I live at 1026 Salem Village Lane in Clemmons, and I happen to be the president of Winston-Salem Tennis Incorporated, okay? And in the very near future, the vendor is going to switch over at Haynes Park and the Joe White Tennis Center. And that's very near dear to our heart. We schedule a lot of tennis matches there through adult leagues, young kids clinics. We have a program called Young Folks Tennis. And what I'd like to express to you tonight very briefly is that we hear a lot of the concerns from the tennis players locally, and when they venture down to Haynes Park, there's always two things that come up. It's one thing that they're concerned about is safety, whether it's sort of inflated in their minds or not, but it's definitely there. And as our leagues grow higher, with more and more participants, we have stacked matches that are going to have to take place. That means people are going to be leaving there at 10:30 at night. There's going to be a match at 6:00, and there'll be a match at 8:00, and it can be very late. So we have players that are just concerned about the area. If there's anything you can do to help that area with safety, there's many other things other than tennis going on there, we would greatly appreciate that, and so would all our players, okay? The other thing is, we host tournaments down there quite a bit, and when we bring in people from out of the area, it's also would be very nice if they felt safe being there. And part of that safety concern is actually having a security system there, and to my knowledge, there is no security system down there. So please, if there's an opportunity to install a security system, please do so. The second concern that we hear a lot is the restrooms, okay? Many of the tennis players and others down there, sometimes they're chained up, sometimes they've been vandalized quite a bit. So anything we can do to improve the restroom system down there is greatly appreciated. So we're excited as an organization. Young ladies are there, that's first served, that's, they're ready to go, and we're ready to help them as best as we can. If there's anything that we can do as an organization, please connect us to the right people, whether it's lighting down there, safety, security, the restrooms, whatever, we're ready to help out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard during the public comment period? Just, yeah, just a second. Seeing no one, I'll close the public comment period and recognize Councilwoman Clark.
Just a very brief comment. I voted on both the motions tonight for Choice Neighborhoods. But let me just give you two quick numbers. The first group was 81 units at $21 million total cost. That's $260,000 per apartment unit. That's a combination, I think, of one, two, and three bedrooms. Phase two, which again I voted for, is 72 units at $22.5 million, which is $312,000 per unit. Now, I know there's other costs involved, relocation, et cetera, et cetera, but I just leave with the comment, if we spend $300,000 an apartment unit, we will never solve the housing problem. And I don't know what the answer is, and I voted for them enthusiastically, but we've got to come up with something.
Thank you, Councilmember Clark.
Something better. Anyway, my thoughts. Thank you.
Councilmember McIntosh sent us all a great article today about some work in Charlotte. I think we can learn some good things from that. Councilmember Brooks saw that. All right. Thank you very much. We do have a need to go into closed session. I'd recognize Councilwoman Clark for a motion, please.
Thank you, mayor. I moved it to Winston-Salem City Council go into closed session pursuant to North County General Statute 143-31811A 3 and A 5 to consult with and provide instructions to the city attorney at stake regarding, one, settlement of a claim, and, two, Forsyth County versus Global Hospitality Management Group Incorporated, case 18CVD4304, a tax foreclosure action involving property located at 713 East 16th Street, and to protect the attorney-client privilege.
Thank you. Sir, a second.
Second.
All right. Please vote for this item when it comes before you, please. Thank you. That is unanimous. We had asked those individuals to excuse us, please, if you're not involved in the closed session item.[1466.30]
Okay.
Okay. Now we have a motion to end the closed session.
Motion to close, end the closed session.
Second.
Second, with Councilwoman Burke. All those in favor of ending the closed session, are we voting? No, okay, all of us say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, thank you. And I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion for adjournment.
Motion second to adjourn. All those in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say ah, no. We are adjourned, sorry.